Everybody would, our engineer Jason Dr. is helping us with a word of prayer. Just right. Dear Lord, thank you for this day and be with these officials as they make important decisions today and other days for the county, let them know this county, you are, amen.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to start out with county administrator items. We need to discuss an appointment, a reappointment to our Three Rivers Board of Directors, seven, five year term. Is this?
Mr. Carolyn, yes.
All right, I do the motions, Randy and second. The chair. All in favor? Motion carries. Next, we got to discuss Senate Bill twenty-seven nineteen, permitting Board of Supervisors to increase the pay for the Board of Supervisors, Justice Court judges, county attorney and the Board of Attorney because they're all bunk together. What is state statute? Two thousand dollars annually across the board. This is going to be one six year, one twenty twenty-four, two twenty twenty-four years.
Correct.
I agree. Three, three.
But I'm not so sure if we don't have to.
I think you have to do it every time.
This is just for this, this time.
You have to make it three phases, but the H has to be approved independently. Make a note if they're approved. So. We got a motion from Randy, second from Steve. All in favor? Motion carries. Next, we need to amend our operating budget to make arrangements for that slight increase on payroll for the rest of this budget year. Have a motion.
Thank you.
Motion from Chad, second from Randy, all in favor? Motion carries. Uh, next, we need to approve travel for the County Administrator Board Attorney, Purchase Clerk, Road Manager and Supervisors to the Summer Convention in Maluxa. Out of motion.
Thank you.
Motion from Chad, second from Randy, all in favor? Motion carries. Next, we need to discuss amending our personnel policy to reflect that the longevity raise continues indefinitely past twenty-five years, every five years where it has been just five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five. You know, we have someone that could go thirty to thirty-five years and we don't have a way.
How's that?
We got a motion from Steve, second from Chad. All in favor? Motion carries.
Longevity pay.
We're going to reword that in.
Right now, if you're twenty-five, you can stop. You don't get another one, so. Somebody here is thirty or thirty-five years.
You're not going to have one. We're giving it to you. No. Do it. Give them a little more reason to stay.
I mean. Put the gun down, man.
That's right. All right, next, we'll move on to Chancellor Clerk items. Uh, we got the consent agenda which would be expenditures from the tax office made twenty-two, expenditures from the Sheriff's Department in the jail from May twenty-two, the mail logs from the jail from May, claims, documents made, the Board Minutes from May, the Road Department work schedule for June, and the solid waste registry. They have a motion to approve of. Somebody. Are they on? Oh, and includes the medical examiner fees. Well, sixteen of those.
And one more.
No, that's next.
I made a motion.
We got a motion to approve these eight items from Randy, second. Second, Sam, all in favor? Motion carries. Next, we need payment for certifying six hundred and twenty-eight homes that application to the Department of Revenue. One dollars each for six hundred and twenty-eight dollars. If you get that, that's be paid, this and that. Got a motion, motion from Sam.
Chad.
Chad, got the second. All in favor? Motion carries. All right, we're moving on to the Circuit Clerk items. She would like payment for being the registrar of five hundred dollars. Out of motion.
None.
Who wants it?
Chad did it, all in favor?
Chad with the motion, Randy with the second. All in favor? Motion. Steve knows, I'll let Steve get in. Next, payment to the Election Commission, four of six hundred dollars each and only at five hundred dollars. Motion. And motion from Sam, second from Steve. All in favor? Motion carries. Next, payment for the May term Circuit Court. We have a motion, um, a motion from Randy. Second from Steve. All in favor? Motion carries. All right, moving on to EMA. Kurt would like for us to accept a loaner vehicle from the Porsche Service for EMA use. We got to put insurance on it and authorize a fuel man to go with all that vehicle.
When we discussed the fuel man, oh, we got a miscellaneous car, but I was just scared to use a miscellaneous car to get this for all purposes. Just a harp. Yeah, that's a mileage. For thousands of miles, so we'll do whatever, I told you, then have a car on that vehicle.
All right, we have a motion, want to approve that?
I have a motion.
Motion from Chad, second. Second, Sam. All in favor? Motion carries. Also need to reimburse one hundred dollars for a process fee for title applications.
Motion.
Motion from Randy, second, second from Steve, all in favor? Motion carries. All right, also, we need to amend the General Fund and the EMA budget. Moving, moving some money from one to the other, too.
Yeah. Yeah, he, he brought a little bit over on the, uh, disposable contract services, disposable supply, so he's like, you know, got the last one.
All right. So we have a motion to approve these budget adjustments. Motion.
Thank you.
Motion from Steve, second from Randy, all in favor? Motion carries. We're going to step over the Justice Court for the time being. They bring that up at a later meeting. All right, next, we got Road Department items. Need to discuss quotes for washout repair and V ditch installation at Magnolia Way in County Road two oh three. This has been approved by the pool bummer to reimburse Union County for that repair work. We got two quotes.
We have one from Steel Con. The amount is twenty-five thousand two hundred fifty dollars. The other is Paul Smith construction, twenty-nine, eight fifty-eight. Steel Con, twenty-five thousand two hundred fifty, Paul Smith, twenty-nine thousand eight fifty-eight.
They'll have a motion to approve steel time, it's a little better to make the repair.
Motion.
A motion from Randy.
Second.
Second, Chad, all in favor? Motion carries. Next, we need to discuss quotes for a push-out flex lane rotary cutter. Road department.
We have one from Johnny Garris Equipment for twenty-four thousand two hundred dollars. In the new Holland, sorry, Washington Hilton, factory company in Pontotop for twenty-four thousand.
It's like nine.
Nine.
Seven hundred dollars cheaper than Garrison's quote. Sure, all of them.
I'm going to vote for the second.
Yeah, Chad made a motion to us to look at it, which would be Garrison's quote. My name was second, all in favor? Motion carries. Next, we need to amend the budget for the bridge on County Road eighty-one. On this, uh, so far, we've exhausted the four hundred fifty thousand. We got in the form of a grant from the state. So we need to start paying these fellows out of our county grants fund.
That's correct.
Out of motion. Make a motion. Motion from Chad, second from Steve. All in favor? Motion carries. Next, we need to amend the road fund budget.
This is based on road management recommendations by increasing the contract contractual services by one hundred two thousand five hundred dollars and consumable supplies by one million eleven thousand five hundred dollars. A decrease in the working tax by one, will be one hundred sixty-two thousand dollars. Reason why, he says prior pay calls came in late and paid, paid for the current year.
Paid in this year. We had a surplus last year because nobody else came. This year, I guess. We have a motion to amend the road. We have a motion from Sam, second from Randy. All in favor? Motion carries. We also need to amend the Road Department budget by using ARCA funds, or road funds, or a combination of each to pay MDOT State Aid Division. This is where we brand into our bids on our State Aid work coming in over our allocated funds. So we've got, we've got, actually got to write a check to the state.
Yeah, July, I framed that, I think, y'all, they do it July, once it's paid out, this. Usually this. I'll make my. So how much do y'all want to pay off the ARCA? How much you want to pay off?
All right, we got two motions, all right, can be incorporated, one, we got to have a motion to amend the budget and where are we going to get the bonus. We got two, we got two options, we got a regular road fund, we can pull the money from, we got our ARCA account. So.
So you use the ARCA.
We got a motion to use the ARCA. We're going, Randy is going to make a motion to approve, to amend, to amend in the budget, rather. Well, to approve and using ARCA funds.
Yeah, your booth, uh.
Can we, can we grab the check, start out with that or do we have to possibly put it into our road fund and then write?
I think you can get this finished right out there.
I understand. All right, we got a motion from Randy to send the state a check out of our ARCA accounts to make up the difference for our State Aid. It looks like that. Now, we got enough to cover this.
We got enough to cover this.
We also got the check to. You know what, let's play it.
We, we, we try our office.
This time another check don't come in at office.
Yeah. That went online and.
You better come and be a company in an office. Somewhere.
It never been to that office. That'd be, that'd be twelve months.
There should be plenty, there's plenty of that.
Randy's made a motion to have the second.
Yeah, Chad, he gave the second.
Yeah.
Like, we'll use, pay it directly out of our ARCA funds. Chad with the motion, come here, Chad, Randy with the motion, Chad with the second. All in favor? Motion carries. Next, we got Sheriff's Department item. We need to discuss an appointment for a replacement for our arson fire investigator.
I have a question about that, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I have a quick question. Uh, is this, is this replacing somebody?
Yes, sir, we, we accepted Brian Toffold's resignation effective May thirty-first at our last hold meeting.
And this is in addition to your captain from County Fire Department, totally separate.
Brian was listed as the fire investigator, but that's what that means, ARCA.
Does Mr. Taylor attend anybody on the Board of Supervisors?
As soon as we move forward, he'll have to refuse it.
Does he have, does he have all the certifications to pick it up and fire?
He has certified, that he has certified, by, he's employed by.
Does he have national certification? Just like, didn't have that.
It's to be certified.
Yes, it's national certification.
It is state certification.
That's all.
And he's, and he's a member of the state statute or requirement, requirement to be employed by the a Sheriff's Department of the county, and he's a part-time detective there, was full-time detective. Part-time city officer, part-time fire, fire fighter.
That answers all my questions, thank you. Did y'all take applications for that?
What's that?
There, we. You did have an application, there's recommendations.
I had recommendations.
Took some recommendations.
I know.
Did you say you did take applications? You didn't take.
We didn't.
The sheriff recommended.
We're discussing with the sheriff, kind of a pretty big deal. Or I did, I know I did. I went back with him a couple times, but. We felt it needed to be somebody pretty well affiliated with fires and also law enforcement side of what. I have a motion to want somebody to this position effective July the first. What we discussed, somebody motion to put it with them. I got a motion from Steve.
I'm second. I'll make this few months.
I have a second. Randy. Sam is going to refuse himself before the vote on the fire. That's his affiliated. We had checked on all that requirements by the state. All right, since it's not a direct defendant, it's not. All in favor? Motion carries.
Uh, see, Dave, is that going to be effective June one or July one? May effective this month or?
I thought we had on there July.
Y'all seen the other guy.
July, we're, we got, we got five. You said we don't leave this travel anymore, then. This stretch, we're going to scratch out a B that has not materialized. Next, need to discuss travel and lodging for dispatcher Tiffany Irving to attend TAC training in Pearl, Virginia. What, those other things. Have a motion to approve that.
None.
We got a motion from Randy, second. Who wants it? I, I'm going to give that Sam. Second by Sam. All in favor? Motion carries. All right, next, we need to discuss quotes on replacing the jail, laws, HBA secret. Uh, we got, we got two quotes here, we had a, uh, one of the several units in the jail that y'all have, this one, that's in part. Uh, it's been serviced numerous times, I believe. They said the last time on these units, I don't know if they've been replaced before, since I hear they're not, I'm not sure, but they do not make compressors or parts for these units involved, so. I guess they start doing that and watch for replacements. I love this one for sure, that's the, uh, first condition there, one from really replacing the whole unit for part. All right, we've got one quote from conditioned air, so. Unit and all installation costs nine thousand one hundred fifteen dollars and fifty cents. Got a second one. Looks like some of the quote from renovating an air for the unit and label for seven thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Sign that one for the last, almost a thousand, almost a thousand miles. Now I have a motion to approve the local. Chad made a motion, second, second by Randy, all in favor? Motion carries.
Barry, we replaced a lot down there.
Well, you do up front, front office, I just found everything, but I believe, I think.
Everybody, you know. I was going to ask you, I mean, it's back there, lots, six or seven weeks, that's what I think.
Next, we've got a solid waste department items, uh, longevity pay increase for David's health.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Randy, second from Steve, all in favor? Motion carries. Twenty years. Uh. Shut up, then it's only.
You can work it, too, if you call Victor out here before thirty. You can.
Copy this one. Next, we need to discuss updating our solid waste policy, but I don't think we need to do anything today. Maybe let Chandler draft for some more modern version.
I do, in light, in light of our garbage cans now, carts, we probably just need to go back to draw up the work.
Start over, we need to take any relation. See what he brings to us. Uh, the tax assessor item, she's got a surrender tag list from May twenty-two. Have a motion to approve of. Motion by Chad, second from Sam, all in favor? Motion carries. Next, we've got, uh, applications for industrial assets on all tax exemptions.
Right, before we go into that, I also have a requirement from the Department of Revenue that we are ceasing a tax exemption due to a bankruptcy. And I have to give them a letter stating that, um, we're ceasing that exemption.
We need to approve that.
I don't think it has to be approved, I just have to let you know that that exemption ceased and then give them a letter about it. And it ceased due to bankruptcy is what, um, so we just have to keep them informed of that.
Who is the?
And it may affect the tax laws and that kind of stuff that you have to keep away at this County Administrator.
Who is the N C?
It was, um, VIP holdings, liquidating. And that bankruptcy went into effect September first of twenty-twenty.
Thank you.
What was that, Seth, there you go.
I'm ready, I have a question.
I don't have any, but I, we had, you approved four at the last meeting and we have ten today. Um, I had a question about one that I called into the Department of Revenue. My requirement is that I have to bring these to you the first, by the, first Monday in June. But these have to be approved to go on the onion roll, which is July first of twenty twenty-two. But we have to do a previous to have it printed out, so.
My suggestion, take it under advisement, put it through you.
Well, you do need to know that, and because I have a question about one and have that call into Department of Revenue and I have not called you back with that yet.
Randy has made a motion to take these under advisement until our next meeting this month, which should still be before.
The twentieth, still give us time.
Randy's got a motion out there, do I have a second? Chad, Chad, you got you, you got you. All in favor? Motion carries.
Well, he has your copy, yeah, he's got your copy.
Randy has made a motion, Chad, one second. Next, we've got, uh, travel meals and hotel expense for MACA Summer Conference in Maluxa July eleven through fifteen. Is that just for you or?
It's just for me.
I've got to give this one off for the tax office.
Motion to approve.
A motion from Randy, second by Sam. All in favor? Motion carries. This is, Veteran Service, sir, is asking for a budget amendment to Veteran Services.
It's just increasing consumable supplies, someone asked about, decreasing capital.
Slight, slight.
Yes. Very slight.
All right, we have a motion to approve this.
I'm like.
Chad with the motion. Second from Sam. All in favor? Motion carries. Fire departments. A budget amendment for the General Fund and Fire Department to purchase two hundred and fifty Mizwin radios for the county volunteer.
Motion to approve.
A motion from Randy. Second. Second, second, you got it. Second by Steve, all in favor? Motion carries.
Kurt, have to plan the next day.
All right, set fire trucks, ring one, northeast and northwestern, volunteer fire departments, that's donations.
Not trucks. It's going to be pumps and generators and that stuff that they got with the forestry on the program we use with the forestry. They're turning them back into the county, but we're going to hold them here in the county for the fire services.
Is that four generators, one pump?
Yeah, they're going to be stored there, all they're going to be stored.
Yeah.
Something new?
Yeah.
But instead of them having to keep up with not going to station, we're going to put them out.
But instead of them having to keep up with not going to station, we're gonna put a bunch.
Do I have a motion to accept this equipment? Put it under our inventory? Second. Motion from Steve, second from Randy, all in favor? Motion carries. Next, accept trucks from, uh, Mississippi Forest Department, Michigan.
I don't know what that is, because you accepted the other truck on the EMA side, I don't think that.
This is good.
That's the same truck.
That's gonna be the.
Probably one of those longer trucks. Once she's got down into the trucks, it's supposed to be that foam unit trailer we once picked up, and I asked us generators to run the. Systems out there. Yes, a foam unit trailer. Or that is generator.
Where's our?
We need to put it on inventory? Yeah, that's gotta be put on there.
Is Kurt now the fire coordinator?
No, sir, which guy?
Where is the fire coordinator? He never, he never comes to these meetings?
Ten foot though.
I don't worry that.
One of them is here.
He comes.
This was supposed to have been put under EMA, not fire services, it's stored here.
Thank you, Kurt.
We covered all of that. Randy, Randy.
Almost think, this is what we just did, it's a force, we need to push it back. That's the, is that something separate?
Yeah, it's. What I hear.
The trailer, the trailer.
The trailer is a complete foam unit.
Foam unit trailer.
It's identified.
So it's separate, from the four generators in one.
I made a motion to accept this.
Trailer and attached generator.
So they hate it. Generator and trailer belong, so they have, they have a motion by Randy. I got a second. Sam want the second, all in favor? Alright. Motion carries. Whoops, that, yeah, that's second from now. There's a lot that goes out of that. I also forgot to mention, we got a special guest, Brother Dean Strauss, and our new U C B A.
That's right, uh, Delaney Ma, so she's gonna revitalize U C B A, and just here probably four of them. Might go.
We're glad to have you. Uh, do I have a motion to recess until Monday?
No.
June twenty? Second. Randy, second, Chad, all in favor? Motion carries.